Buy facility locations, potential location for school facility and of course no action will be taken until six when we have a special call meeting tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Smith for a, to get kind of an overview of the possibilities.
Well, I think if you got some more information here that I think might get us along with your seats, I hope he does. And Brian, these young men, if you're welcome here with the press and stuff to help with the information gathered to help us to at least get a schematic, or schematics put together to give us an overview. I think responding to the negative, you know, both decent property. I think Gina and I talked about this to make sure, clear up. Jamie and I had even talked earlier this morning, there has been, we've entered in the discussion on the Rose property. I didn't realize that when we went back, we'd actually, I guess we've accepted within some of your, and I guess what we're here tonight is determine whether it is an option or not on the Preston property to take it or not. But with that being said, Jamie, I don't want to give you all mixed signals here. We were first led by when we get another, to get another option, then after the meeting, the change, is that correct?
I'll address that.
Okay.
I had informed the board, I had spoken with the president of the Preston piece of property, that's how we've been defining each other, so I'm still with that. Prior to the meeting, they had indicated at that point in time that they would consider an extension of the March 19th option, or another option for 60 days. Following the meeting, I received a voicemail message wherein they indicated that they would not be so inclined to go past the March 19th deadline. There was no explanation as to why, and I didn't, I didn't have any instructions to seek it, so I didn't go to ask for any further explanation. But I think that's where you stand. I have, I asked Mr. Eaton to pull the draft unapproved minutes. We've looked at those, Mr. Manning's motion was to enter into discussions related to the Rose property. I think what you're considering tonight at your meeting, when you get there, would be presumably a motion to exercise the option on the Preston property or to file it, or maybe you can practice that even to continue discussions with, with the Rose property, to exercise the option or to not exercise the option on the Preston property. Along those lines, while I'm standing up, I did speak with Mr. Rose after the last board meeting. He called me back, and he was going to, like every effort to be here, he had a previous plane trip to Washington, that's where he is. I did talk to him about possibly being in a work session, teleconference if he was. He initially thought he'd be on the flight at that time, his flight's been pushed back, so he could be available for, for any questions. I did speak with him about some of the, just because I knew that a possibility he couldn't attend, about some of the issues and concerns the board had, primarily the timeframe in that contingency period of, right now it dates a year. He realizes this, and this thing, the board, you're basically going to enter into a process because there's gonna have to be a world of discussions between the time you start that, to satisfy the contingency for, for all parties. The agreement we've got presently, the board can choose to terminate that. If we're not able to come to an agreement on plans and such things, then there's an act. Their, their, the commitment is, is just to continue discussions, trying to develop this, and to everyone's satisfaction. So that's, that's what you commit to, is nothing more than enter into discussion. Another issue the board had raised a question about, related to the definition of a full campus, what was defined as a, a full campus, and I told him about that. He wanted to be clear that he is not in any way trying to inhibit this, make demands, in any way, shape, or form. He just wants it to be, he wants a full hospital. He is not asking the board to offer programs or services it doesn't already own. If you don't have a swim team, he's not asking you to build a swimming pool for a swim team. And, you know, you can take that on out. He is not looking for at this separate facility for the agriculture or the CTE programs. Even as related to the, to the athletic facilities, he indicated to me at least that that was, you know, sure he would like to see that, he believes the board and the community would benefit from that, from having two football fields, for example, but, you know, that's certainly something that hopefully he would be open for discussion as we develop this. He also said, you know, there could be a realization that we agree on plan, and at some point in time, these facilities may stagger in, you know, there may be a time that the football field eventually gets there. And his big goal, one, he did, he wasn't interested in donating the property as an investment, we've all seen that, for the school system, so he wants to see that move forward. And Mr. Smith and I discussed what was, at the smaller meetings we've had, you know, he certainly doesn't want to donate it, committed it, the bus, for sure, or something along those lines. But he wants, you know, he's got a particular purpose in that, based on the board meetings. So, he, he said he could be available if he thought, I can certainly get one of those first four questions, but I tried, just believing that he may not be available to try and address those. That's what he said.
Did he not, and did I understand correctly, when you spoke to him, Mr. Rose, he even indicated, he was, when he was talking about full campus, as related to what we've got now, was a good way to say it?
Yes, sir.
In the same relation, he's not. And again, to reinforce, I think today, we talked, one of the meetings we met with him, he, he said, the biggest thing, I don't want to donate that property, and then it become the Equusman County, and then if I don't put the language in there, it's full campus, y'all aren't gonna park your buses on it. And I, or just doing softball, baseball fields, and I said, well, I understand that. Now, that I've never felt like that was anything other than the protection of us, and to keep it, the ball rolling, so to speak.
He is not, he is not in any way intending to force the board to expand or broaden programs that it's not financially capable of doing.
And I, I can't speak for him, and no one can, Mr. Smith, but my feeling was with him, that, hey, if we're working toward that, even these dates, I mean, he don't wanna drag it out, I don't think, 10 years, I'm not saying that, but that's no purpose, but if he sees that we're really entering into realistic, good faith negotiations, I feel like he would work with us. That was what I took away from the meeting.
That's what he told me.
Oh, he told you that?
Yes.
That's, that's the way I felt, but I didn't wanna say that.
No, I talked to him Saturday night, face to face.
Now, that's, that's, that's the take that I took, is that he wanted, I don't know why, I mean, I wouldn't want to do that.
I don't either.
And, I mean, there is an act, if everyone can't come to the board to remember, there is a reasonable act, if the board can basically terminate it at its discretion. Now, the cost of that is, you've got a present option on that piece of property, that may very well not be available if it's terminated. It's back to me, sir.
Did he, would he be willing anything other than a high school, elementary, or middle school? Anybody ask him that?
I would have to ask him, my question.
In case it come down to that point?
I would have, I wouldn't represent that, I would have to ask him, and I'd be happy to, I'd try to do that, try to get him on the front.
Let me throw something else out here one time. What if we bought the Preston property, and also entered into agreement, Mr. Rose on that piece of property too? And then, I'm not saying trying to make no money off the Preston property, but that's a prime piece, piece of real estate. That way you would have that piece of property, and we could work on Mr. Rose, and talk to Anderson, and come to agreement, 'cause if you looked at your schematics, and how they fit the schools in here, it looks like we have to have the five acres from the church, and looks like we're gonna have to have a little bit more of the A.G. property. Well, if we're gonna build a full function high school, what are they gonna charge us for that? I think we got a really, really good deal on the Preston property? I mean, seriously, we don't know what the church is gonna charge. They said they're gonna be firing with us, and I'm sure they're gonna get a measure in there and appraise it. I know there's two lots sitting across the street there, that's worth a big chunk of money, decide if five acres be worth a big chunk of money? I don't know. And then if we enter into negotiation with the A.G. property, or the White's property, or, you know, something like that, what's gonna cost us to get that, that course? I'm just throwing this out here, and I, I gotta thank you today, 'cause I, I, I like the Rose property, I really do. The people in my district, not all of them, not 100%, I've had phone calls for the Preston property, and I've had phone calls, a lot of phone calls, for the, the Rose property. But Robin hit the nail on the head at the last board meeting, that I've always had in the back of my head, I don't want us to get left holding nothing. Nothing. And I don't know legally, I guess we can't, if we bought the Preston property in 10 years, we don't need it, could we sell it?
There's no contingencies associated with it. Your owners ever liked to say it's a good one?
Yeah, and we might put, and then it might be something, the area's gonna grow, and it might be something we hang on to in case the area becomes a mountain's juliet. And we have to build another school with some guy or something. And then we can say, well, guys, we got 27 acres sitting over here. You know, if you asked me last year, I would dead set, I would have bought the Preston property as soon as it comes, come up, and we all would have, but we was a little hesitant at the time, thinking, and then of course, Mr. Rose has been gracious enough to offer up some property, and I, and I feel bad for the Preston family, 'cause we're stringing them along, you know?
For a price.
Well, for a price. But if you, if you think about the price that we're gonna pay for the Preston property, maybe, maybe we, maybe we buy that, and we enter into agreement with Mr. Rose too. And then if things don't go our way for Mr. Rose, and we back out, which we can't, or he could back, or he could back out.
Contingency has to be set.
We're not left with nothing. Because I'm telling you, there, there's not, if you're from the south side of county, y'all know the, there's not 27 acres and 25 acres, or 20 acres, available every day on that south side of the county, you know? Mr. Baylor, you're from over there, it's not there, is it?
Can you shoot back for that condemnation?
Yeah, yeah, got in with the money.
That makes friends with everybody, though.
And, and, we, we've got, listen, we've, we've got, make no bones about it, we've got money in our budget, we ain't gotta ask the county commissioners for this money we're gonna buy the Preston property for. We ain't gotta do that. We ain't gotta ask the taxpayers for no money. We have money within our budget that we can spend on this property. There's money there, we can write the check tomorrow, or Sunday night. But, but the money's there, and then we sure, we sure, we sure us of a piece of property. And then we can enter into a great, a negotiation, or talk with Mr. Rose, and see how that comes, and we could end up with two pieces.
I don't, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
I mean, it's, it could be an investment.
As I always told, you know, they don't make dirt anymore.
I mean, I was just gonna, 'cause, listen, I, I'm, I'm torn, I'm torn between the two pieces of property. I mean, I talked to council county commissioners last night, and I'm, I'm 100% John Rose property, 100%. But then I seen your schematics that you put out here, and I'm like, wait a minute, we're gonna have to buy some land, the way this land lays, if we're gonna put a full function high school on this thing. And then I'm like, geez, 19th is coming fast, we're gonna lose this, so.
I was very shocked that there's a lot more parking on the Preston property than the Rose property, and I wouldn't have thought that without this draw, I mean, that, that helps tremendously. It helped, I was really surprised by that. I like the lay of this, the way that it's laid on the Rose property, but I agree with you, Mr. Manning, absolutely. I think that we don't have, at best we have a contingency on the Rose property, and there's still a good ways, as Mr. Winkler just said, a world of discussion, and, you know, things have gotta happen between now and then, and, you know, they're not making real property anymore.
And whatever we decide to do down the road, or the next board, if we're not sitting on here, and they decide whatever school they wanna build, 'cause right now, we're not for sure what school we wanna build.
Right, exactly, right.
And if they ever decide what school they wanna build, taxpayers of the county's gonna figure out how, they're gonna be forced to figure out how they're gonna pay for it. I mean, it's gonna have to come to a referendum or vote or something. And, you know, at least with, with another option there, you know, and of course, John Rose, he, you know, he might even say, hey, Bill, I'm interested, that's what you need, you know, maybe. But, you know, at least, we got a little bit more leverage, I guess, a little bit more options to us. And, like I said, we, we've got the money, the money's there. That's just what I was thinking about today, 'cause I, I, when I seen this, I just, my man, I don't know about.
I agree with you that it's more cramped on the Rose property.
Yeah, and what if, what if they come back to us? I'm just saying, what if? What if the 10 acres we need to buy is three quarters of a million dollars? And we pass 27 acres up for, I mean, 492,000, what we own, or, you know, I mean.
Little corner of the domain.
We're not gonna look too, too good there either. So, that's what I'm gonna propose, the board, we, we buy the Preston property, and we also enter into a contingency agreement with Mr. Rose, and we, we can, we don't come out of here holding nothing.
It's all, it's all legal to be able to do that? Mr. Rose deal?
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would think as long as we met his contingencies, that it wouldn't matter to him what we do with the other piece of property.
I mean, he didn't, he wouldn't, I mean, why would he say about anything he wanted to buy? I mean, that's, that's, you can't do that.
We, we've sat here and talked about the pros and cons of both pieces of property, and, you know, there's pros and cons, and we can just beat that horse to death. I say, it isn't bad no far. But I'm just, I'm with you, Robin, I just don't wanna be sitting here a year from now, what if county court decided they don't wanna fund it by no way, no means, no nothing, we're sitting here holding nothing?
Yeah.
That's just, I hadn't thought about, thought about that with y'all. 'Cause odds are, if, if we do agree with John, and we decide to build a high school, we're gonna definitely have to purchase some more land around it.
You agree with that?
And right now, we don't know what the cost of that investment is. We don't know what John's is gonna be, we don't know what the others. And while we're kind of working through that, we still got a piece of property that we can fall back on.
On the third one over, I see the building, the parking, and then coming down, where you've got with, says with football field. So that's, football field's gonna be to that left little, right there, the, uh-huh. And then next to it is?
Baseball field.
And?
Above it is what?
Softball.
Okay.
And this would have to be purchased, this piece of property here, plus that piece of property is already being configured in every one of these schemes.
Well, we're, we're back to, I think what I just understood with what Mr. Winkler said, is Mr. Rose didn't say that we had, he would have liked it to be a full, but if there's not enough property there to put the football field, or, I mean, if, if we're not being able to do.
Well, there's not baseball fields and softball fields that go into high school now. I think that's what your, your point is.
Correct. That's my point that I'm making, and, and if I understood it the way Mr. Winkler said, and correct me please, if I, if I'm hearing you wrong, if it's not there, it's not, it doesn't have to be?
Well, he was.
Because I mean, if, if.
Yes and no. He is not interested in forcing the board to offer more programs or opportunities than what it has now.
Right.
He is not going, I use the example, he's not requiring that you put in a swimming pool for a swim team, because you don't have one now.
Right, but if there's, if there's not the space for it.
Certain vehicles, I think it'd be on the back.
Could you possibly be, I'm not trying to get ahead of you, but could you possibly be saying, something I think you gotta consider, if we, let me say this, we've been God blessed, we've been lucky, we've been a lot of things, just for the, we were supposed to be out of money this year, y'all know that, we're supposed to went to county court and asked for net worth, the eighth sense, to sustain more at. We've been very fortunate, we have got a good fund balance, and everybody sees that. And we had, we've, we've had some plans for schools, we've had some plans of land purchases, raises for teachers, bus drivers, VAs, this has all been a plan that, we'll throw it out there now, okay? But I wanna see it, it's gonna be sustained, be able to sustain this, not double it on the next director, or the next board, I, you know, what if, what if they don't have a good relationship, and they can't get money? Okay? So I don't think that's fair. So if we tie up 500,000 this, my question is, it's gonna be hard to tie up another 500 to get stuff around if we have to do it. And then, what, I guess what you're saying, not putting words here wrong, could we, if we bought the Preston piece of property, could we go in there and put baseball and softball field? Is that what, maybe where you're going, I didn't mean.
That, that's what I'm trying to say, because the thing is, is if we're looking at additional properties, and we're, it, it's just the best way to, to put it, because, I mean, if a facility would not fit, or if we're looking at security, and we're looking at buses coming across the railroad track, and we're looking at all the things that we're looking at on the Preston property, we do not have any, you know, we have to do this. So if we put the athletic parts of it in one location.
Then it would free up some, and, and I hate, maybe I hate to put you on the spot, but you're kinda on the spot. What, what did the church, we have a talk, did y'all ever get a number back on what possibility that property might be?
Uh, no, sir, and, and I, I am not the pastor.
Okay.
And I talk with the pastor, and what he has done is he has asked someone to come in and give them a fair figure, because, you know, how churches are, you got some people think it's worth going, and some people think it's worth not.
And you said it had to go all the way to like to North Carolina, or somewhere that, it's, it's, it's not just here, right, it's the organization that's gotta make that.
Uh, no, no, it's, it's the local, now, we would have to get approval from the body, but in general, I've never known them to go against the congregation's wishes. So if the church body there, and the group of people that are members of those, do something like that, then they would go along with it. And what they're trying to do is come up with a fair figure of what the property would be worth, so, you know, they don't, they all have children in the schools, they don't want us to hold anybody up, they just wanna get a fair figure. They don't have that yet.
I know, I'm just saying.
They're willing to do whatever they want to be done.
But I mean, it's a, it's an option, it's, it's, it's an option.
And then, Mr. Lateshires, I'm just picking on people's ground. You have spoken to the A.G. families, I correct? Or set through some?
My dad, Miss Virginia A.G.'s daughter, according to my dad, has told that they would be willing to, I have not personally spoken to my dad.
Did I understand what, maybe we needed some for touchware, the pantry, or something, that kind of thing?
They said they was, my dad told me they was open to seven land or, or school. I mean, I would, I don't know where I figured, and yes, sir, he figures into that, but I guess someone could go ask them.
Yeah.
I have no problem doing that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and the church, right now, it's any or all, I mean, anything that you consider, they're up.
If we were to entertain the idea that Mr. Manning's brought forth with purchasing one, and then accepting the other on a contingency with Mr. Rose, how would that, you know, financially, how would that affect us in, in being able to accomplish some of the things that, you know, we've kinda laid out as far as, you know, our plans, and our goals, and things that we've, we've worked on? And I know what your, your idea is, so where does that link us?
You know, I think, especially, you know, we talked to the regional director, or regional guidance, and there's, Tommy, I know was on the board during that time, and I talked to you something about it, I don't know if anybody else was on it during that time, but it was back during the stimulus money, and there was some money at the time, I didn't know.
Children.
Exactly, what to do with it. And so it got put, and the consultant has been on us since I've been here, spending, spending, spending. We don't wanna put it in like a salary line item, 'cause it's a one-time expenditure, and they won't let us in. Kinda like you was talking about line items, gotta go certain places. I sit right back here and talk to him, within the last two weeks, there's approximately 320,000, I think that's right, I don't give you a number, it'd be wrong, approximately 320,000 of it would be, we have that there, and an account they don't wanna spend anyway. The office, the rest of it would probably have to come out of what he directed, well, we saved an interview savings, fund balance, somewhere, but he thought, had no issue with us doing that, okay? Now, you know, anytime you start taking time or throwing out chunks, it's gonna get, but this is part of our plan, I wanted to show we could do this out of good faith too, that I thought, you know, we're not even asking the county commissioner to give us money to buy land, if we do that, we're, we're doing it. And, so, I think we can, I think it's very doable, and not mess into the big plans as far as what we wanna do.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I was getting at.
But if we start, I'm gonna make this for the record again, we have been, you know, God's played a big part, obviously, Diesel has figured it, went out and $5 gallon, we've been about it for two, two thirty-two for the last two years. As hell, we are saving real money paying the, totally against the synergistic thing, but we're paying that, I call it ransom, 146,000, a ransom, and still not going by abstract figures, we're pulling a real number, saving over 200,000 dollars a year to fuel and electricity and, and water with the thing we're doing, just to be changing out different, even just the simplest commotes, we use it, 5,000 dollars a month in paper time, but you accumulate that together, and it's a big sum, and it's, and we've done well, and we've been lucky. And I guess from my paranoia, where I sit, is it real, and I want us to be able to sustain it? I don't wanna put that on the next board, or the next director, and so I do have a plan that we'd like to get raised, we've been working on it for some time, but we wanted to see that we could do it, but I haven't asked for money. I know that's, I've danced all the way around, but I felt like you didn't know that, and I think.
Yeah, that's what I, you know, I don't wanna do, and I totally agree with what Mr. Manning's saying, and, you know, and he's talking about what I said at the last meeting, you know, kinda tag team with that, I just don't wanna do, do that at the expense of teacher raises, or, you know, anything else. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I don't really think that, to the 300,000 part of it anyway, that couldn't win the teacher raise at any way.
Right, because it's, right.
Yeah, it couldn't, because of that line item, we're back to that line item.
It'd go until one-time expenditure, and then the recurring expense.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
So it's not, the majority of that couldn't be spent for anything but a building, but a football field, but a piece of property. You know, I'm sitting here, gaveling over here going, boy, I hope they just take the Rose, that's my 100,000, I was like, say, you know, thinking like I think. But, but I've said from day one, for the record, obviously, if we kept, well, Gina and I, we've said from day one, boy, we should take them both, because we can, we got a lot of options.
You and I have had that conversation as well.
Yeah, I think we met up about that, it's, you know, it's great, back to what Tommy said, Mr. Manning, I live over there, there's just not a lot, you're not gonna find a lot of piece of properties that you capable of putting this up, even till you start getting out, and then, or you can take it, and then, and that's not gonna work too good, but, but there's just not a lot, the capabilities is that close to what we want to do. We're very fortunate to have a choice, or have them both. And I don't think, like you said, you ain't gonna lose on it, I mean, I don't.
No, they don't make dirt anymore.
I don't feel like.
And it gives us a, it buys us a little time to look into.
When we could always turn around if we seen that we didn't, you know, and I do think that the more research that we put in it.
We're against it too.
That, that the railroad tracks is a major concern, because you wanna, you know, we got, we got basically 10 ramps, got an operation down one right now. You, you think about, that's, that's 40 times, not counting field trips, not counting cars that have to stop, not counting UCHRA, that's 40 times a day, the bus, they gonna have to stop, over doors, look both ways, shut it back off, and then there's absolutely, we have no control if they decide to run a mile long train to there at 2:40. So that is a major concern. And, and David brought up a given about it too, you know, you was talking about stopping on the interstate, being able to shoot something in front, but, but then I, well, you got Wilson Central, you got Lebanon, not far from there, most, it's hard to get in this area and not be close to a major highway intersection or something, so.
Railroad crossing, crossing tracks is not a, a minor thing either, but they're very dangerous.
They'll, they'll make you probably put in an actual cross.
It's a very dangerous proposition, could be, could be down, we have to try. Along those sidelines, you may be stated, it's obvious, but if you have a piece of property, and you don't put stuff in it, it's not gonna follow up the money issue, or, I, if it would , that's had a paper, property, that would be down. That's any question.
It'll make you more money than putting it in the bank.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I didn't hear you say.
It'll make you more money than putting it in the bank.
So we're good with budget wise, it will hurt us budget wise, what we were planning on doing anyway. What we were planning anyway, so.
And what, it seems like we're getting pressure from, I guess, auditors or whoever's coming in, wanting us to, to do something with that money.
He had, he's, he's a great, he's a great guy. And he, he's really tried to work us to spend that the last, and I don't even, you know, been able to. We're not gonna do that. Of course, the state comptroller wants us to be zeroed out every year.
Right.
So we're not operating like that either, so.
I was planning to you sometime off the record how that happened.
You, you were the only one I think that was on the board.
I was the chairman of the board at the time, but I, so I had to say something.
And I may not be giving you the exact number, but I think that's close, that pool. We did have something that got, went down. I can't remember, it went through something out of a year or two ago that he let us allow us to spend on. But I can't seem, seem like it's, it's too late, but I think that's through, I'd have to go back and look again.
Was it the air conditioning?
I don't even remember, Robin. He, you know, one day like a fool, might have been, might have been, we had that major deal. We had two things, like one for a deal where we talked, we were even about twenty thousand gallon of.
Water.
Yeah.
And it was, yeah.
And it was, it was either that or this deal right here where we had to replace water line from Europe and do the whole system, which gets a black and water line. And the health department, but it was something through major, we had major toll. It was one of those that I think, 'cause I live it. But I, to answer your question, I think we would be bad. We felt like we would be. That works both ways. It's like saving, it's easy to, it's easy to do that.
It's easy to get rid of, I said.
Yeah, I said her paranoia, I got that job.
I don't know if y'all know the dill haze, but my hands right now are clenching. We're talking about spinning that, spinning.
Hello, Mr. Campbell.
Hey, how y'all doing?
How many more acres would we, would we need on that Rose property? I'm just saying with ten more acres.
Thank you, Brian. That was, if we did the church five acres and then what we're looking at roughly off the A.G. property, put it just approximately five, seven acres.
Probably another five.
And you're predicting ten acres total?
Ten more acres, sir.
And that's, you know, the layouts that we gave you are conceptual, so things could be moving around some. To try to avoid those strange areas we can and some things like that, just power lines.
And, and again, these are just a rough estimate too, aren't they? I mean.
Well, the square footage is, Aaron, you can address that, but the square footage is very close.
As far as the square footage of what? Building, that's the same square footage for every single plant you got there. That building is the same size on every option you're looking at, whether it be the Rose or the Preston property.
Is that a double story or a single story?
It's both. The classroom wing I've got on there is a two-story classroom wing. The rest of it I've got is a single story. You got a lot of big block space, you got gym, vocational, those aren't two-story type spaces, auditoriums. So, but the only thing I've got on that slipper right now is the classroom is two-story. So you could probably add some more to the second floor. You wanna move a library upstairs or move other things upstairs. That's a possibility too and reduce that footprint. There's some flexibility there. You know, we took a guesstimate on what your program is. We don't know exactly what you provide. So I pretty much put a number of things in there to make sure we have things covered.
Would, would that design with the amount of property there be conducive if the growth was unreal to add another?
Yeah, this is.
Wing or anything on there, it would pretty much lock into that size right there.
Well, that's another good piece to throw out there considering both these sites. Because that right there, you can see how tight it is. I didn't plan on an addition on there to increase from, that right there is based on a thousand students.
Yeah.
But potentially a core of a twelve hundred. So, yeah, you could probably extend the classroom wing out further. You can see how it's, you could probably get some more classroom capacity right there in that scenario. That is definitely an option. As far as your core, you wanna build the core the way you, you need to know what the maximum capacity of that facility is so your core's right. Core capacity is a critical piece. If you know you're gonna be a fifteen hundred high school someday, build a core of fifteen hundred and you can start out with a thousand classroom enrollment and add the other five hundred on later.
That's, that's the issue that we have in some of our existing schools. We've got size and we've got room, but we don't have the core to support it.
We don't have the core to support it.
Yeah.
Any more questions, comments? Do y'all wanna take a break before the six o'clock?
Do we need to adjourn from the work session?
Oh, yeah, I guess we do. We don't have to have a motion to adjourn, this is a work session.
Dismiss work session.
Okay. If there's no more questions, we'll dismiss the work session till the six o'clock meeting. Everybody stretch their legs.